We'll start the meeting.
All right.
Call a meeting to order for June the 2nd. Special meeting agenda workshop, we'll start with the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
For which sands.
Liberty and justice.
Well, I don't think we have to go through announcements because it's only us. I don't see any of the public is here. Board discussion on proposed agenda items, 2.1 is the dog laws, that's in progress.
Thank you for putting up those signs, Ben.
Yeah, they gotta get the rest of them up. We still have a couple here.
Put it in the garbage, please.
Got to update the town laws, policies and fees, so that's ongoing. Brandy, I got 2.2 is your horse for location and electric. Do we know what kind of electric that needs? Does that need 220?
It's 220, right Sean? The electric, the horse, is it 220? Yeah, he needs 220. And I have all the specs on, Scott Porter has all the specs, but it is 220.
Okay, because I was talking with Jim today at the code office and we should probably have a discussion with him on where you want to put that. He had some questions and I had some questions regarding whether it needed to be fenced, how the electric is going to be there, and then where we put it in relation to, so that people aren't just coming up without having somebody there that's, you know, operating it.
We've thought of it all. So, we all met there yesterday and it's not going to be fenced, it's, once, we're gonna pour this, Don's gonna pour the slab, then we're gonna put this thing on it because it has to be level, we can't do it on the ground. And it's pretty flat next to the solar array, but there's distance from, from the driveway to the soul, to the unit. And then we're gonna enclose it somehow, so that it's not open, we'll have hours posted on the closed unit. And we're, we're only gonna meet them up there two times a week, and those days haven't been determined yet. It's two or three hours each time. And it'll be run by a certified, like stop order.
How big is this?
It's a, I believe it's 28, well, the pad is gonna be bigger than the unit.
It doesn't, it was just for discussion.
So it's eight by 20, but we padded it out, so it would be, you know, there's some room to walk around it and, and do anything we need to do it. That's, there were two spots that Don suggested. One was right there, which was great because it works right with the solar array. And Scott is talking to the guy who owns the solar array to see if we can somehow coordinate and hook into their power system. And again, we would have to talk to Jim and an electrician and all that. But we didn't know if we had to put this out to bid or not.
Do you have time to meet with Jim this week, so that if we've got, I think we're probably gonna have to put out the bid, we can at least do that next week?
I think, yes, Scott should meet with Jim because I don't, he really knows the spec, he knows the whole thing. And I'm just kind of the mouthpiece to tell you what happened. And the other spot that, that Don had mentioned, neither one had electric right there, they'd have to be drawn. The far spot is kind of behind that barn down near 97. And it's kind of secluded and I didn't think it was good in the dark to have something like that.
By the school buses?
Yeah, exactly, in that, but even down towards the, the back of that barn, near the school buses. It's kind of a hidden, so we decided on the, near the solar array, we could have a light there once we put electric in there, just that, that one light, because they don't have a working light there. I mean, there's a light, but it doesn't work for you.
Do you want to reach out to Scott and maybe he can get hold of me and we'll set something up, I'll get hold of him.
Yeah, I'll call Scott. And I gave him the solar array, Billy D. Filippo's info yesterday, so he could talk to him about possibly coordinating with them. And I'll tell him to contact you. Okay. Perfect. And then you guys can work it out with Jim, because that's what we need.
Right, and then we'll put something together as far as what you're gonna need for your bid specs and stuff to get that.
Yeah, he, he's got all that information. And I'd love to vote on it on next Tuesday if we have.
We should be able to, yeah, there's no reason why we couldn't. I think Crystal's pretty good with doing bid specs right now, so we could probably get another set out.
Okay. Thanks, Crystal. But it's exciting, it's moving along.
Jill has on there for 2.3 ATVs.
Wait a second, Ben.
Yes, Jane, I can't see you.
She doesn't want to be seen.
I know.
2.1, it says in progress, who's taking the lead and responsibility for that?
Actually Jackie's doing it with Nico.
Who was the first person?
Jackie.
The attorney.
The attorney.
Oh, okay, with Nico, okay, fine, as long as there's someone responsible. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Jill with the ATVs, we've had a lot of complaints about that, so I have contacted the state police and I'll give a call out to the sheriff's department and see if we can't get a little bit more assistance in that. I don't know what else the town's gonna be able to do about it, but at least if your constituents are asking. Do that.
Yeah, they are, yep, yeah, three people come up to me at the farmer's market on Saturday, so, you know.
I've had people complaining about it on the flats, too.
Yeah, that's where it's been happening, that's.
But I, up on Irish Hill also, terrible.
That's pretty much where they come from.
Yeah, so yeah, okay, thank you, Ben.
2.4, the town building, we're still closed. We've got, I don't know if anybody's seen, I think everybody's seen the door that we put in. And there's probably, you're gonna be seeing two more doors being done, one upstairs that currently from the inside swings out. We're gonna change that door to one that swings inside, a little bit more safer on the landing, and also it'll have the ability for the code clerk and the court clerk to deal with the public through the door, much like the one that's down here. And then the door down here in the clerk's office is gonna be the same way, it's going to end up with a window in it, whether it's a Dutch door or a window door, I don't think that's been determined yet. Correct, Crystal? She's muted, we should enjoy it.
Thanks, Ben. Yeah, we haven't decided if we want to do a Dutch door or the window door. The reason, the idea for the Dutch door is that long-term use, we would still want to kind of maintain that. I know back in the day they used to have some kind of a, a partial door. We're just realizing, you know, a lot of residents, they're very used to coming and they, they come to pay their water sewer bill, or they come through their dog license and they want to stay and talk for an hour or two. And we're trying to, we're trying to keep from that a little bit more to help move, you know, to keep things moving forward. So this way, if we had a Dutch door, it's very respectable. It says, please come and talk to us and come and, you know, take care of your business, but please don't stay for a long time. And, you know, we've also found that in the past, you know, you'll have, I'll be in the middle of a meeting or doing a marriage license, somebody else comes and they want something, and instead of just sitting at the table when they're prompted to, they sit on a stand and they walk around the office looking at everybody's desk. I, I don't think that's appropriate, so I, I think a Dutch door would be nicer for the main floor than just the door with the window up top. But it's also a little more costly. Let's more airflow in. So yes.
And on town building, I'm gonna, it's not on the agenda because I just got a fax from Colin Peters. So I'm gonna read it to the board and get your comments. Colin Peters is the chairman for the Board of Assessment Review. There's three, three members on the Board of Assessment Review, the chairperson and two other. On behalf of the three members of the bar, I am requesting permission to use the town hall to have our adjudication meeting. As you are aware, the bar is a quasi judicial body and to adjudicate the cases before us, it is imperative we have access to pertinent town records in real time, hence the request. The three members will be the only ones on site, will comply with existing guidelines and regulations in terms of distancing and use of masks, trusting in your favorable reply. This is tomorrow. That they want to do this. I have not gotten a hold of Colin regarding this, I did, I did talk to him before, I was under the impression that this is an adjudication meeting. What I'm finding out is that tomorrow is the adjournment meeting for the Board of Assessment Review, which also includes the assessor, the clerk to the Board of Assessment Review, and possibly one person from the public who is going to come in because he wasn't able to come in during the regular meeting. I don't know if anybody's got any comments on that. Crystal has zoomed the regular meetings. Our courts are still closed. I do understand that, that they're a quasi judicial body. I feel that we can safely zoom it.
Well, but I, I will say though that Colin is so strict in his own pharmacy that he would make sure that everybody did mask up and, and keep social distance away. If they really need the information, I think maybe they should be able to get it.
Yeah, if the maps are, if the maps are down there, you know, that, having to do with this, that would make sense.
My problem though is that, that's fine if, for the adjudication meeting, but they've got an adjournment meeting also, of which Kenny is part of and Karen Valenti is part of.
And Karen Valenti said she does not want to come.
And one person from the public may show up.
And just so everyone.
Do their adjudication meeting after that. I don't have a problem if the three members want to do that. I'm not gonna submit or subject Kenny to the adjournment meeting if he doesn't want to go, he doesn't want to go.
Well, then maybe they'll just have to table their meetings until they gather the information, you know, like one person goes up and then they'll do it another week or so.
No, they, they can do the adjudication, what they've got, they're gonna actually have two meetings, Jane. One is gonna end up being the adjournment meeting and the other is going to be the adjudication. So what happens is they'll go to the adjournment meeting, they will review all of their decisions that are before them. And then they would, and normally they do it all, they, the clerk stays and normally the assessor stays. Colin wants to go by the letter of the law since he doesn't want the assessor there and he doesn't want the clerk there because there's going to be no recordings. And then they discuss how they're gonna adjudicate each of the cases before them, you know. Sally was looking for a 20% reduction in taxes. What she's got, we're only gonna give Sally 2% reduction or no product, reduction, that's what they're doing in the adjudication part, so.
I kind of think they should have to zoom like everybody else.
You couldn't assure him, they don't, I don't know if we still have to record that particular meeting, but it's not a meeting that we'd have to post online.
Correct.
And as far as the maps, I mean, just being in the meeting, all of the meeting that they have had to do, the tax maps were provided, so we were able to pull those up on the screen, so everybody was able to see and zoom in. We went through all the forms together, they had me, you know, scroll through, we'd scroll through everything, zoomed in if we had to.
So you're doing their meeting tomorrow night?
If it's gonna be required Zoom, then yes, I have it already set up.
They, see, that's something I need to, Colin needs to figure this out with the assessor. He is trying to tell me that it's just an adjudication meeting and it's not an adjudication meeting, it's an adjournment meeting followed by the adjudication. So the adjudication doesn't require the assessor or the clerk, but they might have the public coming in and, you know, Kenny, Kenny doesn't want to come here. And I respect Kenny and Karen for not wanting to go and wanting to Zoom, no different than if any board members, you know, if I said, hey, you know what, we're gonna have live meetings now. We're still not at that point.
Yeah, I, I agree with Bruce, I don't, I think they should do Zoom also.
Okay, well.
Yeah, if, if we're all doing Zoom, why, there's no reason they can't.
There's too many variables, you know.
They're adjud, yeah, they're adjudication meeting, if Colin wants to do the Zoom meeting first and then they want to close that meeting and then they want to drive into town, we can make, I can make the town hall available for the three of them.
Right.
And I'll let that be Colin's, Colin's call as chairman of that board, but.
That makes sense.
As far as his.
Right, as long as they have access to the information, that's all.
And if for any reason they're looking for the tentative 2020, that is on the top shelf over by the manual box, you see what says manual?
Okay.
It's right there. So that's the only thing, that's not downstairs already, all the tax maps, new and old and otherwise are downstairs already. And so are the 2019 tax rule.
Perfect. 2.5, Star Hestie's letter. Everybody got that, I forwarded that to everybody?
No.
Yep, yep.
I also sent it out, I was what, Friday, that we received it, I sent it, I forwarded it to everybody.
Okay, okay.
Jane, are you checking your Tustin email?
No, I haven't.
That's why, that's why, because that's probably where it is.
Okay, I will look at it. What does Star want?
It's the same letter that I had, I'd received on January the 3rd, she was asking for a 268 code compliance investigation.
This is with the property down by.
Yes. And I sent her a reply on the 29th of May before our last meeting. She is reiterating that she wants it again and I'm gonna be drafting another letter to her. I pretty clearly stated that the town was not going to go forward because under advice of council, there is no known, that we know of at this time that we are not taking action against, and a 268 is if a town doesn't take action or knows of part of the town that's not taking action, that we would do an investigation of compliance on it. And if that, the town or the municipality does not do that within a certain period of time or says that we refuse to or we're not going to, it allows the aggrieved or the people that believe they're aggrieved to take further action, but it, it puts, it puts the burden of proof on the people starting the action. You know, so they have to defend it. It, it just, without having any violations right now, we don't have the ability to say, I'm gonna do an investigation because there's no violations that are there. I think part of the problem is that they feel it was an abandoned or a condemned building. And now it's not a condemned building, but you know, the bottom line is it went through the building department, it went through the planning department and the final act was a certificate of occupancy was, was given to that, and at this point, there's no known violations that we can see, so. If there's violations on the inside that we can't see, then that would require a warrant for us to go in and find, so. I spoke with Danielle again about it yesterday and she agrees that if I take the same action, you know, that. Questions on that at all, or?
No.
I'm sure that's gonna come up at the next meeting. I had to get a letter to Star before then, but I'm, we'll probably hear about it in public comment. You know, I understand their frustration, but we don't have anything that, you know, the attorney or myself see that we can really do with that. 2.6, water and sewer, purchasing a new billing software, we're gonna leave that on hold, they've, they're still working on that, so probably at the board meeting, we'll put that on the agenda for, for that.
Well, wait a second, who's working on it?
Dave and Kelly.
Well, how about we contact Candace? Candace is our, our cap representative and she's familiar with all water billing software. And maybe she could recommend something that will, you know, crunch numbers better than other software or something like that.
Okay, I'll, I'll put a note out to Kelly to have Dave contact her.
Well, and I'll email Dave.
Okay.
Jane, just so you know, I know they did reach out to Badger, the company for everything that we do utilize. And that's who they got a list of who would work well with the Badger systems, that way it's gonna be easiest for them. So they've done, I think, three, and I do believe they are looking into a fourth billing program, so they have a lot of comparison numbers. But there's more than one, it's a, there's two, it's kind of two different programs within one, so the bill's gonna be kind of high at first. But I just want to let you know that they did reach out to Badger, who we got is the company that.
Well, that's all good, but in the future, we're gonna be applying for all kinds, I hope, all kinds of grants and they're going to require all kinds of statistics. And we just want to make sure whatever new software they have, it's capable of providing the statistics that we'll need in the future. And Candace would know that kind of information.
Oh, yeah.
I'll just ask Dave to check and I'll copy you.
2.7, the Wayne Bank parking lot. We've got a snag on the parking lot with ADA compliance for a handicap parking. I met with Jill today and we talked about some things, she's going to reach out to some adjacent property owner and see if we can keep that moving. But there's not much to.
Why isn't the handicap parking that's available now? Okay.
Because the, the piece of property we're buying, that handicap parking that is there is not part of the purchase, it's part of the bank. And it's also not ADA compliant. Our, our problem that we get in is that the one-way in and out, we've got an issue with one, parking, where they're going to park. And then two, getting them from the top of the hill to the bottom of the hill. So.
Always something, but, well, we have a, we have a thought and I'm gonna.
Yeah, so Jill's been on that before with that and maybe for the, if not for the next meeting, for next agenda meeting. Board discussion.
I have something. Crystal did ask me if I should put any, put the culvert on the agenda and I said no, but I think the board should know, Ben, you know, that the latest design and proposal that we have from the DOT and the Shoemaker does say that they're going to probably spend more money than the grant has to the tune of about $48,000. So, everybody should be aware of it, so it won't be a big surprise. Any, any questions on that?
It has to be done.
Right, and that's still.
And it's a, and it's a drop in the bucket compared to the whole cost.
It's, and it's still much less than what our first go-round was, so, yes.
Do they have a start date on that at all, Jane?
Say that again?
Do they have a start date for that?
They do, but I don't know what it is. I thought it was going to be this summer, to tell you the truth. Because it has to be finished by, I think, May or June of '22.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions, things for the agenda?
I got, I got some things going on in my noggin here.
Uh-oh.
So, this gathering on the bridge, do they have a permit for it?
We don't have a gathering law yet.
Okay, are they social distancing? Not. And these signs that are popping up around town, I know when I had a sign out here for my business, I had to have a permit. I see Black Lives Matter, well, one's supposed to be blame terrorism, terrorism, but it's blam terrorism, you know, we got signs popping up around here and what are we gonna do about it?
Well, why do you should ask that? I was just talking to the code enforcement and he is going through the code right now to find if people need permits or if they need permits to advise them in that and if they don't need permits to advise the board of that.
And, and this whole gathering down there, nobody's social distancing, that's very obvious to see. I mean, I, I understand this was a wrong thing, but we're gonna have to keep on top of this because things are happening. That's all I got.
I have one more thing. Ben, we talked about this too, it's been more than two years now since the fire on Main Street and that building is still boarded up. Is there anything that can be done?
Let me ask Patrick what, if they've got, if they're moving forward on anything, I think that would be the easiest thing to find.
I, I thought there's some regulation that insurance companies have to settle within two years.
Within a two-year period. Let me find out. I mean, the, the quickest way to find that out is to ask Patrick.
Well, all right, because everyone should know that was, numerous people on this survey, the comprehensive plan survey, mentioned how they're so dissatisfied that that looks the way it does.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that would be the, I think if we go to the horse's mouth, it'll be the easiest.
Probably the best thing to do.
Okay.
I have two things. Sorry, Crystal. So, now I'm seeing graffiti pop up a lot on the bridge, you know, the one on Bridge Street. And on the library sign, there's an anarchy symbol painted on that, and so it's popping up and I'm wondering, I asked Don if we had any kind of chemical solvent to take it off of the sign. He said it's too expensive. I don't know if that should be an answer, he has quite a budget. I can't imagine, he can't like get a little bit of solvent to get rid of those things as they come. Or if we maybe paint on the bridge thing, I don't know, I just don't want to get out of control, you know?
Didn't Ben paint the bridge this morning?
Yeah.
Does that, yeah, I mean, it's not really his job, but yeah, he's done that, so.
No, I did that one.
It's very simple, carburetor cleaner takes that stuff right off the sign.
I talked, yeah, I talked to the, the county sign people and they've actually got graffiti remover. I thought they were supposed to come out and have already done it, but if, if they haven't, I can hit it with some brake clean and that should probably do the second thing.
That was one thing, and the other thing is the, the 9/11 monument went up and this chain is not working. These people will not chain that on there every day putting it up and the minute I leave, I'm sure they're taking it down. I mean, it is available for parking for anybody who's doing construction in the buildings or who owns a building or, or, we would like the fire department to never have to get interfered with if a car or several cars are parked there and don't allow for them to get to, God forbid, a fire behind the building. That was really my big concern. The second concern is, it's a veterans memorial park, so we kind of wanted it to be, park on Main Street and walk to this thing, it's two seconds away. I know parking's an issue, but I'm telling you, people are parking down there and they won't stop, so do we go to Plan B with a gate or do I talk to Art Hawker and see what would you guys like because we can't lock anything?
What they, what the fire department wants, and I've talked to them two days ago, is they will lock it and give a key to the, the owners of the building.
Oh, okay.
And they're gonna be responsible for when their deliveries come and when their workers come.
Okay, that's good.
And Saturday.
I really would like not to have to go that route. But it's gonna, it's gonna be up to the, the building owners and their construction people and stuff to, you know, or even the Main Street.
Well, Saturday, there is scheduled a meeting with the fire department and the three building owners Saturday morning to discuss all of these issues.
That, and you're gonna be at that, Jane, correct?
What?
You're at that meeting?
Yeah, it's at my house because we can't go use town hall and if it's nice, we'll be outside and social distance. Do you want to come? Saturday morning at nine o'clock? Saturday morning at nine o'clock?
I'll put it on my calendar. I know we've got appointments. I'd have to be back by 11:00.
Okay, I mean, I haven't heard from two property owners, which makes me a bit concerned. But I will follow up on that because we made it so that the one property owner was in town, I hope. And the other one just hasn't responded, but-
And that would, I mean, that would be the time when we've got them all together there to, you know, they'll be able to see that that's what our intentions are. And it's not, it's not a punitive thing that we're trying to do. But it's something that is important to be done.
Yes, yes.
It used to be locked, it used, it used to be, it used to be chained and locked. It's easy enough to go back to that.
Well, the time is right since there was an incident there, so, yeah, let's discuss it.
What incident?
There was a brush fire behind the Tustin Cup.
Oh.
Oh, what incident?
What or when?
Well, both.
What and when?
Yeah, it was just, it was started by the, some of the construction workers. Um, not a big one, just a little bit of smoke.
Yeah, but that's, but that, little things get to be big things and we don't want that.
Well, that's, that's why the time is right to discuss it now.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the concerns when I was speaking with Dave Casey is that they've got 17 LP tanks back there.
Yeah. I think your idea, it really, I don't know who pays for that, I guess they do. And where would we put it? But Ben's idea was to have a, what, a distant-
I don't know if I want to take credit for that one. Is actually having a, having Main Street piped for gas from another area where you'd have a large holding area that actually brought it to the buildings, it got metered so that you didn't have all of the, the problem behind the buildings for the fire department. I, I don't know how much that would cost. I think it would be very cost prohibitive.
Unless it's under the deck.
Yeah, one big bomb instead of like 100 of them.
Yeah, well, I don't know. I don't know. Bury it.
Well, that's all I've got. Randy?
That's it.
Good.
No. Jane, anything else?
I cannot think of anything else at the moment.
Okay.
I was gonna say, Crystal, cute dogs.
They're so cute. I took their picture.
Oh, I guess I have a quick question for Crystal. Crystal, and it, I don't know, it's really a Kelly question. Do you know if the invoice came in for the generator yet?
I don't believe that it has.
No? Okay.
Well, I have one more question since we're on, one more question. So I had talked to Kelly and she was going to, I gave her the receipt for the flowers for the 9/11 monument and she had the plaque when Karen was there. And then the remainder is going to be split. We decided, I talked to Ben about it. I'd like to split it between Lurch and Nico since they did all this free work. And this grant is specifically, you know, specifically earmarked for the 9/11 monument. So she's gonna give me the total, but I haven't gotten that yet of what we spent so that we can get those two checked out. And the two guys were very humble about it, like, no, it's okay, but we have to spend it. And they really worked hard. I mean, Lurch got this giant boulder out of the woods and, and all the other things he did. So, Crystal, hold your ears. That's all I've got.
I move, will you adjourn?
A second.
Second.
Well, if I don't see any of you soon, or I'll see you all on next Tuesday. And Jane, I'll probably see you-
Saturday morning at nine.
Nine o'clock.
Still enjoy your vacation.
I'll let you know, because somebody can't make it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Ben, I need to know about tomorrow.
I'm going to get hold of Colin and I'm going to get hold of Kenny. They're gonna have to do the adjournment meeting on Zoom. And then if they want to do the adjudication, Colin can have them drive to town.
The meeting's not going on, Bruce, you can leave.
I'm trying to figure out how to get out.
Here, I'll move you out.
Okay, thank you.
Ready?
You're there.
He's laying on the computer, look.
All right.
So I'll get hold of, I'll get hold of Colin.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
All right, I can see the bottom of my screen, hold on. All right, goodbye, I'm leaving.